Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for coming. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Just a few things that are very important in making tonight a very big success. As soon as my sound guy turns me down. Okay, that's still good, I think. Okay, we'll start tonight by acknowledging the land on which we are gathered on here today as the traditional territory of the Haudenosaq and Ashenawas peoples, which is covered by the Upper Thames Treaties. We acknowledge traditional territories in a manner as a sign of recognition and respect of indigenous people who have been on this land for hundreds of years and who continue to have presence. I would like right now to ask all of you, if you haven't already, please put your phones on mute or silent. I would like to thank UNIFOR Local 636 Political Action Committee for putting this together, John Payne and Rogers TV for recording this. I would also like to thank Melissa Holden, the Vice President of Local 636, for timekeeping, Scott Bradford, Local 636 Financial Secretary, for looking after the sound, Doug Steele, Local 636 Retirees Chairperson, for being tonight's Sergeant at Arms. UNIFOR will not tolerate or condone words or actions that undermine the dignity or self-esteem of any individual. Candidates and members of the audience are expected to be respectful of each other and avoid the use of insulting, offensive, or prejudicial language. Failing to do so will have you removed from this meeting. All questions being asked tonight will be asked by me as the moderator and have come from the community via email. And the questions that were most frequently asked are those being used tonight. Candidates have drawn for seat location and initial speaking order. All candidates will have three minutes for opening remarks, one minute to answer all questions, then two minutes for closing remarks. Candidates, please note that timelines will be strictly enforced. The speaking order will be from 1:17 and 17:01. 1 being closest to me, 17 being Paul Plant. Question two, we'll start with Paul Plant and come back to 1, et cetera, et cetera. Props and drawings and models are not allowed to be used. To introduce tonight's candidates, we have Dave Babcock, we have Leah Santos, Connie Lauder, Allison Frederick-Gowling, Kate Leatherbarrow, Dwayne Camola-Thomas, Mark Schadenberg, Francesco Cunero, I've asked him three times, I think I still did that wrong. I'm sorry, Francesco, Liz Wismer Van Meere, Wes Mazar, Jason Norris, Jay Pember, Jaspreet Sandhu, Sandra Talbot, Bernia Wheaton, thank you, Deb Tate, and Paul Plant. We will start with Dave Babcock and your three minutes of opening serum or opening regards. The time starts when the candidates start speaking.
I'm Dave Babcock. And I'm pleased to end up and see all you people here tonight and everything, and the citizens of Woodstock. And hopefully I can end up and win your vote and everything to end up and run for city council. I realize we need a lot of change. And I end up and realize that all the citizens of Woodstock are the ones that pay the taxes and everything. And when you're paying the taxes, you're paying our wages to be there for you and represent you and the services that we end up and have. And, you know, I've been here since 1998 and I've end up and kept in close contact with, end up in city services and stuff like that, so I end up and know what goes on there. And I've done all my homework. Anybody has any questions, everything's right here. I end up and have all my paperwork. I've done all my homework with James Street. I've done my homework with City Hall. And that's about all I have to say with my opening remarks. And hopefully I can win your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Babcock. Leah Santos. You can stand past the mic.
And please be cautious of the water when we do.
Yes. I'm Leah Santos and I'm running for Woodstock City Council. I am a wife and mom to two great kids. I'm a resident of the core of the city. My family and I have lived here for seven years now. We moved here from Paris. I grew up in Brant County, in the small town of Oakland. We love the city. My family loves to ride our bikes on the trails. We love that we can walk from our home to access the library, schools, shops, theater, groceries. And much of what we need is right here at our doorsteps. It is because of my love for the city that I am running for city council. We make time for and put effort into the things that we love. I'm running for Woodstock City Council because I want to be part of creating the vision of the next 20 years of our city. I care about our residents and the land that we are on. And I want to start building the city that my children will want to raise their families in and can afford to raise their families in. I envision a strong city where everyone can prosper and feel secure. I have been canvassing for months now, not just in this election, but in the election prior. I have been working to bring change to our area. I've knocked on many, many doors and asked your thoughts, your concerns, your ideas and inspiration for how we can grow and thrive together. I've worked to not only engage residents, but to improve voter turnout at the polls because I believe that democracy requires active participation. I've never shied away from hard work, but I have honed in and focused on what matters. I hold a master's degree in disability studies and have spent many years caring for others through both direct support, case and program management. I also have experience as a small business owner, where we provided a space for local food producers to sell their goods. During the pandemic, I made the decision to take on the role of stay-at-home parent. These experiences have offered an opportunity to look at our community through a different lens. Seeing many of our local challenges that exist, we have an opportunity to go in a new direction, to strengthen our foundation and expand our options and grow new opportunities. The pillars I would like to focus on when elected to city council are climate, community well-being, and connection. It is time to include a climate lens when we are making policy choices for the city, not just regarding waste and renewables. We need to address biodiversity, smart growth, and, um, sorry. Biodiversity, smart growth, and ways to move around the city to reduce our environmental impact. The city is experiencing large challenges, making our people vulnerable. The situation will persist without changing course. We must fund the outcomes we want to see to make meaningful improvements to community well-being and safety. We will do this through fostering connections between each other, between community partners, and between neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Santos. I'm going to ask that we hold the mic as close as we can to us so it's easier to control the volume. Connie Lauder.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. I am Connie Lauder, candidate for the position of City Council. Over the past 15 years, I have served on the majority of boards and committees of council. My knowledge is current and I am well aware of the future developments and needs going forward as the city continues to grow. Since February, I have performed the duties of the mayor, including serving on county council. In these official duties, I have represented the city council and city at many events reinforcing you of my commitment and involvement in the city. For the past 12 years, I have served on Woodstock Nonprofit Housing Board. This board affords me the opportunity to understand and work for the needs of the affordable housing in our community. It is important that council continues to work for more housing in the downtown, which in turn can bring business opportunities to this area. Council has approved 40 projects over the past 10 years, providing grants and loans for over $1 million in new development, including 250 new residential units. Councils have addressed approximately 30% of the recommendations in the downtown development plan in place since 2020. The strategic streetscape master plan addresses the development of the museum square and Dundas Street from Vancider to the west of Beale. It will be the responsibility of the next council to determine the direction this development will take. Infilling throughout the city is important, with more housing units hopefully to help stabilize the housing crunch. Servicing of our undeveloped industrial lands is a priority in order to meet the growing requests. Servicing plans, decisions made today affect the city five to 10 years hence. These are challenges of a growing city that make it important to have a strong, knowledgeable council. We have also seen dramatic growth in our parks and recreation during this term. Trails, new parks with outdoor basketballs, improved soccer fields, et cetera. Recreation for youth is growing. 50 programs, including floor hockey, tennis, basketball, et cetera. For the more mature citizens of our community, council has approved the expansion of Southgate Center. Council has been working toward meeting the needs of all ages of the population in our community. With growth and expansion comes other needs, such as fire hall, policing, additional recreational facilities, and library expansion. These items require attention as Woodstock moves forward and beyond 2023. I strongly believe in the working with county social services and the many organizations who continue to diligently strive to meet the needs of the vulnerable in our community, ensuring medical treatment and assistance are accessible for all. Social services is a county responsibility, but as a city, we must work together to achieve success. We must continue to lobby the provincial and federal governments for social policies to end poverty, not only in Woodstock, but throughout Canada.
Thank you, Connie. Sorry, time's up. I can, you, I don't really need it, but.
Thank you.
I think I got it figured out. I think it's me.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending. My name is Allison Gowling and I'm running for election to city council. There are issues confronting Woodstock that have to be addressed. Property taxes are out of proportion from what other centers pay and for what services residents receive, like not receiving weekly recycling pickup like other urban centers do. Service charges are levied for virtually anything a resident does. Seniors should not hold on to their garbage for a week because they can't afford a crummy $2 garbage tag. Woodstock needs increased funding and police presence to deal with the waves of petty and property crimes, drugs, the panhandling, and traffic violations. The situation of the homeless, mentally ill, the disabled, and affordable housing has to be addressed by the city. This is because the provincial government has washed their hands of those less fortunate. The lack of enforcement of property standards in Woodstock is disconcerting. Our downtown has potential. Let's make it beautiful. The city has approved a new master plan for the beautification of the downtown core. Developing and implementing such a program without first dealing with the various social problems is the classic putting the cart before the horse, or if you prefer, putting lipstick on a pig. I do not promise you a panacea, no magic bullet, no instant solutions. I have no personal agenda, other than a longstanding desire to serve the community. I'm from a Southern Ontario farming background, steeped in rural methodism, a generation that believes in a good work ethic, that one's word is an unbreakable bond, and one is expected to help their neighbor. I have significant employment and volunteer experiences that would be of a great asset to city council. I am highly principled, strong-willed, and opinionated, and I speak my mind, sometimes too much. Just ask my wife. However, most of all, I'm empathetic to everyone's issues. No matter how small, if it's important to you, it's important to me. I've already mentioned two possible bylaws at an earlier meeting, the prohibition of election signs on the road allowance and with banks locking their ATM lobbies after hours. If elected, I will be pursuing the provincial government for more voting options, such as mail and online voting, a ranked ballot, term limits for councilors, as well as advocating making Woodstock and Oxford County a one-tier municipality, and Go Transit to extend out to Woodstock. You have my word that if elected, I will work for you and only you. Woodstock has not had proper representation these past four years, and it's time for a change, top to bottom. You deserve better. New blood and fresh ideas. If I may quote from Marc Anthony's Cry Havoc speech in Shakespeare's Julius Caesar, "It is time to let slip the dogs of war." It is time for a change. I earnestly solicit your support on Election Day, excuse me, on Election Day. And again, I thank you all for taking the time to attend tonight. Thank you.
Kate Leatherbarrow.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight and for participating in the upcoming municipal election. My name is Kate Leatherbarrow, and I am running for a seat on Woodstock City Council. Today is actually my birthday. And on this day, 32 years ago, I was born right here in Woodstock at the old Woodstock Hospital. I am thrilled and privileged to be a candidate in this local election. I co-own a small business called Early Bird Coffee, where we have two brick-and-mortar locations in Woodstock. I am a mother, friend, community advocate, and volunteer. Throughout the campaigning period, we have spent many hours knocking on doors and listening to residents, sharing the conversations and concerns that we hear at the door on different social channels. The biggest message we hear is that the residents of Woodstock are ready to head to the polls on Monday, October 24th, and they are ready to embrace the change that has already arrived. Tonight, I am joined by multiple new faces and some returning faces. Most of the issues we touch on tonight do not have simple solutions and should require detailed answers that will need more than one to two minutes. I encourage you to contact me after. Tell me what is important to you and what you would like to see for the future of our community. We have experienced significant hard times throughout this last term of council, and it is time for a renewed relationship between the citizens of Woodstock and City Hall. This is my second time being a candidate in a municipal election. In 2018, I lost a seat on council by 59 votes. And since then, I have stayed active and present in the community. I am on the Board of Operation Sharing, a member of Circles Oxford County, co-founder of Municipal Campaign School, and I have consistently dedicated my time to community events. I am deeply passionate about municipal politics. I have often said that this is the most important level of government because it is our backyards, parks, libraries, schools, where we raise our children and where we call home. This next term of council must focus on the future. We need to elect leaders that are anticipating the next 25 years. I have met community members that are impacted by the weight of everyday life, the housing crisis, cost of living, people struggling to recover from the pandemic, aging parents, young families and youth moving away, mental health and addiction being at an all-time high. These are just some of the issues that we hear at the door. And let me say this, there is no more time for the status quo to continue. Let us select leaders that are more inclusive, passionate about the possibilities for our city, and leaders that want to hear from you. When we hear tonight, experienced versus eager to learn, we need to ask the experience, have you fostered relationships with future leaders? Have you held the door open for others? I am doubtful that the answer would be yes. My plan, if elected, is to work hard, be accessible and accountable, and as well as lead with a vibrant and local viewpoint. Thank you.
Diversity is a word that is now synonymous with Woodstock. Once upon a time, not too long ago, that was not the case. 41-plus years ago, when I was born here in Woodstock, that was not the case. When I went to school, when I grew up here, that was not the case. That school that I went to has since been demolished. The church I went to demolished. The hospital I was born in, Kate was born in, you guessed it, come and go. Woodstock used to be a sleepy town. 6:30, 7 o'clock, doors closed on a Friday night. Saturday morning, families would pile into Civic Arena, Perry Street Arena, play hockey. Perry Street Arena, that's another one, demolished. That was the Woodstock of then. The Woodstock of now must include diversity. At least it has to consider it. It should feature it, from the friendly city to the diverse city. Now, when I'm talking about diversity, I'm not, well, I am talking about a diversity in culture, but I'm also talking about the diversity of age, diversity of economics, financial status, that's diversity. Locations in Woodstock now, as the city has expanded, that's diversity. As we move forward, we need to consider this. And it's something that I look to approach as I sit at council. These are the type of issues, or any issue that we look at, it needs to be addressed with that in mind as well. The issues that are relevant to the 20 and 30-year-olds of Woodstock are vastly different than the concerns and needs of somebody who's retiring in Woodstock. That's diversity. All the way from the house on the hill to the tents under the bridge, that's diversity.
Excuse me, first of all, I want to thank the residents of Woodstock for having trusted myself to elect me to city council in 2018. I'm Mark Schadenberg, and I now seek reelection to a city-only seat at Woodstock City Council. My wife Nicole is here today, and my son Spencer, both great assistants in my campaign, as is my daughter. She's not here because she's curling next door. I've resided in Woodstock for 50 years, and my background includes a long list of leadership and volunteer opportunities. Seven years as chair of the Recreation Advisory Committee, 21 years on the committee in total. Three years co-chair of the Kansas Society's Relay for Life, three years chairing the Woodstock Sports Celebrity Dinner, including six years as Master of Ceremonies. I don't sit in a chair with a gavel in my hand, I'm hands-on. I'm also a dedicated member of the Lions Club of Woodstock. Yes, I'm running for a city-only seat. Does this mean I have no thoughts or visions on how we can assist the homeless in our community and those with mental issues or addictions? Absolutely not. I have toured the inn here on House, Operation Sharing, Salvation Army Resources, and I've sat around a big table with the staff at the Oxford County Community Health Center. But most important, I have volunteered with groups like Cycles of Life and the Community Free Table. My roles on current council include Recreation Advisory, Accessibility, Environment, UTRCA, and two years chairing the planning meetings. One of my goals after the 2018 election was to analyze the city's list of suggested street names for future roads to thereby create new themes, as the city had already utilized themes like birds, trees, golf courses, poets, renowned Canadian politicians, and even streets to recognize the former ORC buildings. After many discussions with museum curator Karen Houston, a new list was created with some fresh themes and local historical names to move into the future. City council and senior staff have worked diligently through the pandemic on concerns ranging from downtown revitalization and a Woodstock Recreation Needs Assessment Study, which encourages the expansion of the current Southgate Center and the replacement of the 52-year-old Civic Center Arena. The city completed a development charges study, which could see a key modification in how the Economic Development Office negotiates land sales and building permits with possible new industry. With a population rather quickly growing to approach 50,000, residential quantity is a very important issue, and the interior government stresses intensification through its Provincial Policy Statement 2020 and the Bill 108, More Homes, More Choices Act. Many people on this table may think that city council has a lot of freedom in those areas, especially with zoning. We simply do not. The trend is to see more apartment buildings and row townhouses, but council must stress that some apartments should be condominium ownership so residents are not paying rent and watching retirement savings gradually disappear. Some people like the idea of permitting ARUs, additional residential units in all zoning areas. On R1 zoning areas, I think that's not necessary as of yet. Thanks.
Francesco Cunero.
Got it right. Got it right. Thank you very much. Well, hello, everyone. My name is Francisco Cunero. A little bit about me, I am a loving father of two little girls, ages seven and nine, and loving husband to my wife for 10 years and counting. I went to Sheridan College for Electronic Engineering, so I naturally enjoy problem solving. I enjoy reading technical manuals, troubleshooting with schematics, and finding solutions to any technical problems. For the past 23 years, I have been working at the Ford Motor Company in Oakville, and I've been a union member ever since we were called the Canadian Auto Workers, CAW, now UNIFOR. Working in a union environment for this long has taught me how to, how important our collective agreement is, especially for working in a safe and healthy environment. The collective agreement is comprised of articles that specify agreed policies between the union and the company. Ford has been my full-time job. However, I do like to stay busy with my own personal hobbies that include operating my online radio stations, where I get to host and play music. We have been living in Woodstock for the past five years, and I've seen some of the issues the city has been facing. After speaking with residents here in Woodstock, I have come to a conclusion that everyone has different concerns that matter to them and need to be addressed. Perhaps we need an online public engagement program. Public engagement is the process by which residents are informed on or given the opportunity to be involved in city decisions that impact all, part of the community. It would, it will be great to foster an open and transparent government through a public engagement program. Woodstock belongs to everyone who lives in it. I would like to have the opportunity to represent the public, develop, evaluate, and steward the policies, determine which services the municipality provides, and to maintain financial integrity of the municipality. Thank you very much.
Liz Wismer Van Meere.
I need a booster seat. Good evening, and thank you, UNIFOR Local 636, for hosting us tonight. And thank you to those here in attendance and tuning in. We appreciate your interest and engagement in our upcoming election. My name is Liz Wismer Van Meere, and I am running for a seat as city councillor for Woodstock City Council. The Wismer family have been proud Woodstonians for close to 80 years, owning and operating a number of local businesses, from the Twin Alms Drive-In Restaurant to Wismer's of Woodstock Chocolate Shop. A little bit about myself, I am married to my high school sweetheart, Mike. That is proof that rival high schools, Him-Here Park, me, Cass, can fall in love. We are proud parents to two teenaged kids, Addison and Quentin. I spent eight years at Hard FM as an on-air personality, doing the morning show for five of those years. And yes, that was my voice that you hit snooze to multiple times. During my time in local media, I learned a great deal about our community, the people, businesses, organizations that call this home. Currently, I am the Resource Development Manager at Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Oxford County. This work has further opened my eyes to the lack of support for youth in our community. Having lived these experiences myself, it is becoming more evident each year, and as we continue to grow, that our city has never had a solid foundation to support our youth. This is one area of focus I want to take to city council with me, creating a youth center that allows space for youth to meet safely for rec and leisure activities, along with access to local resources where there's no label or stigma for those youth who are there to utilize our support services. We know there are measurable outcomes for youth who are properly supported in social, emotional competence, mental health and well-being, as well as educational engagement and employment readiness. Youth are truly the future and represent the success of our community. It's time that we take action on how we can support homelessness, mental health, and addiction through education, awareness, and advocacy. We need to decrease our environmental impact through updated waste management and diversion. And we need to acknowledge the potential for increased emergency services and community facilities to accommodate our growing population and our expanding borders. We need to support local. How can we reduce empty storefronts in our downtown core? And how can we support not-for-profit organizations with improved community grant policies? And we need to embrace our change. Our community is growing at a rapid pace, and everyone's voice is integral to the continued success of our community. I am passionate, I'm passionate about community and community involvement. I have worked with an extensive list of groups, organizations, boards, and committees, as well as local businesses over the years. I see many of you in here tonight that I've had the pleasure of working with. In 2019, I was absolutely honored to receive the Woodstock Chamber of Commerce Community Involvement Award. This time, I, the time that I have spent working with local boards has allowed...
Watch out for that water. That's what they said, don't hit the water. Good evening, everyone. Let me just pull this a little bit. Good evening, everyone, let me just pull this a little bit closer.
My name is Wes Mazur and I'm running for Woodstock City Council. Thank you to your gracious host here at Unifor Local 636 for the invitation to participate this evening. Thank you also to all the people in attendance this evening and to those folks that'll be watching from home. My wife and I moved to Woodstock just about ten years ago with our daughter Nadia and our sons Alexander and Joseph. We have learned why Woodstock is the friendly city. We have also learned that Woodstock is the best community to work, live, eat, shop, and play. I currently own my own local business right here in Woodstock, it's an award-winning health and safety training and consulting firm. I am also a part-time professor at Conestoga College and I also teach at the University of Toronto. I have a strong background in emergency services, business development, volunteerism, as well as not-for-profit organizations. I have been involved in many different organizations and have held various leadership positions, including serving on the Downtown Cambridge BIA Board of Directors, that's Business Improvement Association. Please check out my website and Facebook page for my full CV and list of qualifications. I am running for city council because I want to be a voice for our community. I believe that everyone deserves to have their needs represented at city hall. I am also a hard worker and will always put the needs of our community first. Over the past few months, I've been spending as much time meeting with residents as well as city staff as possible. This is to help me understand background, history, current condition, as well as what they believe, what we believe the future needs are of our community. And I must say, wow, do we ever have an amazing staff here in the city of Woodstock. They are passionate and they care about every one of us. I look forward to tonight's event with our colleagues and I hope that you will support me with your vote on or before October 24th. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, I'd like to thank Unifor again, like everybody else says, and thank you all for coming and participating. It's very important, no matter what happens, just vote, vote, get out and do your homework. And thank you for being here, thank you for doing that. Again, my name is Jason Norris, I'm originally from Toronto, Ontario. I moved to Woodstock just over eight years ago, I fell in love with the community, I fell in love with the local shops, the farms, the food, everything. I picked up my life and I came to Woodstock and I don't regret any part of that. That has made me create a page called Citizens for a Better Woodstock, where I try to promote local businesses, try to talk about the, the things that are happening in Woodstock, good, bad, the ugly, and it made me realize that a lot of you are concerned, as concerned as I am. Thirty go, thirty years ago in Toronto, the homeless situation wasn't as bad as it is now. What scares me is that it's happening in Woodstock now. Like the others, my campaign is based on a lot of the major big issues, the homelessness being one of them, but also like Liz, my concern is the youth. And the youth need somewhere to go, they need somewhere safe so that they don't end up on the street. We need to stop it now, okay? Einstein said, you know, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting the same result. We have a lot of great candidates here and I think they deserve to be looked at for our future. Thank you.
Jay Pember.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for coming to listen to us tonight, thank you to Unifor for hosting this. I'm Jay Pember and I'm running for Woodstock City Council. I was born and raised right here in the city of Woodstock. The house I was born in, I can see from where I live, I don't like to go far. I live with my wife Kathy, we have a dog, and we've raised two sons and three grandchildren in the city. I've been on the Board of the Red Cross and I've been highly involved with scouting in the past. I currently have been a paramedic for thirty-three years, serving the city of Woodstock and currently sit as the Operations Commander, which has allowed me to be on several committees that are in the background of what affects the city, the county, and the province. I believe this has given me a very different aspect and perspective on what affects a lot of things in our community, our homelessness, our addiction, and our mental health issues that are happening in the downtown core, to be a little more specific. I'm running for this election because I want to bring transparency, common sense leadership, and to be your voice for the next four years. That's our job, you have a problem, you come to us. We try to solve it, we try to find you help for it, and we help put the community in a better position. The next four years will require that strong leadership, progressive thinking, and an understanding of the issues we are facing. I have no agenda here, my job is to better the community, that's what I want to do. I want to support and promote local businesses into the downtown core and in the peripheral areas. I want to work to find solutions for affordable housing, addictions, mental health issues that are very present in our, present in our community, the downtown core, you can go to American Square and see this on a regular basis. I would like to improve our community services and programs, entertain new ideas and programs and for services to better suit our diversity as a community. I want to ensure that the services that are offered in the city are supported well, be it with staffing, training, or resources. And the only thing I want to say after that is, this is the one election that affects you the most as a citizen. This is the one that directly affects your services, your taxes, your parks, everything. So please get out and vote, thank you.
Jasper Sandu.
Hello, everyone, my name is Jasper Sandu and I am seeking election on the Woodstock City Council. I'm a mother of two boys, a daughter, daughter-in-law, a wife, and a proud community member here in Woodstock. I've always been an active volunteer in our community as I have been involved in numerous neighborhood and community initiatives. For example, I have the honor of sitting on the Board of Directors for Woodstock Hospital and a few weeks ago I had the pleasure of hosting Ontario's Deputy Premier and Minister of Health Sylvia Jones, who got to see firsthand the work our healthcare heroes do at our hospital here in Woodstock. In addition to this, I'm also a member of the Patient and Family Advisory Committee and the Woodstock Fire Advisory Committee. I care deeply about health and safety and I will prioritize these issues because I believe everyone in our community should have the right to a healthy and a safe life. I also want to be a bridge builder for our community and help our city grow and unite with other, with strong community ties. I have the honor of working with the Woodstock Police Services, being a member of their anti-racism advisory committee, to help their efforts in keeping Woodstock safe. I want to be elected to our city council so I can continue this work in emphasizing safety, order, and unity in our community. I care deeply for the safety of our city because as a mother, and much like all the parents and grandparents here, I want a safe environment for our children to grow up in. And this is why I also enjoy volunteering for the Oxford Children's Aid Society in my spare time. When elected to council, I will prioritize safety in our downtown areas and make the issue of homelessness a primary issue in city council. I know people have been feeling unsafe in some parts of Woodstock, mainly the downtown area, however, if elected to council, I will focus my time and energy for the next four years to eliminate this issue as a lack of engagement with our downtown area impact on our local small businesses that are concentrated in the downtown space. We must clean up downtown Woodstock that it can be safe, clean, and a credible place for all Woodstock residents. I know this current council has adapted a downtown development plan in 2020, working on its, by short, middle, and long-term goals. This document is available on the city website so everyone can access, access it. I am also very proud of being the founder of Woodstock's The Good Human Project, a volunteer-based service initiative which helps housebound people in calling or texting for delivery of basic groceries, prescriptions, and other essential items. This project is very special to me as it shows the spirit of our community, having each other's back and being united. Because at the end of the day, no matter our differences, we all share one thing in common and that is calling Woodstock our home, and we should all be committed to making-
Thank you very much. Sandra Talley.
Mister Moderator, fellow candidates, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for taking the time to come here tonight. Woodstock has been my life home where I have worked and raised my family. Since that time, I have watched the population more than triple and the boundaries and physical size grow past that. Woodstock sits in the golden triangle and has become a hotspot for development, both industrial and residential. In the last sixty years, we have done numerous boundary adjustments to keep up with this growth. We need to make the best use of our land and the resources, looking at going up and not out, as we can't continue to take our rich farmland. Hopefully, the residents of Woodstock realize that residential growth costs municipalities money as we have to provide more soft services. Excuse me. We strive to find balance and in the next five years, we will need to have another fire substation on the north side that's probably needed by the, for the police and paramedics as well. Woodstock Economic Development Department has done a great job in attracting business, which results in jobs in our community. We need to continue our efforts to retain all business, industry, and resulting workforces. Especially since the pandemic, there seems to be hiring signs in all sectors. The city is investing in our downtown, which is the home of many small local businesses. Since the beginning, downtowns have been the heart of every community and it's our vision to make it a place for the community to gather and encourage shopping local and living in the core. Check out our downtown development plan on the city's website. Growth brings with it the good and the challenging, one of those being homelessness. Woodstock and Oxford County are no different than any other community experiencing it. The county is working with Operation Sharing to run a twenty-four-seven shelter, which will be needed with the bad weather fast approaching. They are also helping to fund and actually staffing, to work staffing, so that they'll be closer and more accessible to the people who need the services. The county is also flowing dollars through to developers to help fund affordable housing. However, this takes time and the problem has only gotten worse with the demand for housing as prices soar. Our population is also aging and those services will soon be past their limit, especially since the province is now sending patients to long-term care facilities to make more room in the hospitals. For those that are active seniors, the city is supporting the expansion of Southgate Centre to keep those that can be active, stay active. The youth in our community need our attention and we need to listen and recognize their challenges and needs and support them as they go forward. I feel privileged to have had this community's support for over thirty years and I am respectfully asking for your vote. Honesty, integrity-
Thank you very much.
Good evening, I am not originally from Woodstock, but I've chosen to locate here and I have a desire to serve this community on city-county council. My name is Bernia Wheaton and I am the mom to two amazing teenagers. My oldest teenager is turning eighteen on Friday and she will get to vote in her very first election here in Woodstock and it's a proud opportunity in our household. A little bit of background, I've spent seventeen years working on various municipal contracts, primarily focused in economic development, which is supporting our business community, creating linkages and, and helping to grow our economy at the local level. I've worked on projects on downtown revitalization, skills training for our existing workforce, business attraction, workforce development, redevelopment of industrial lands and shop local campaigns. And what working in municipalities has taught me is to be a relationship builder. You can accomplish so much more when you bring people together to collaborate rather than to divide. To be a problem solver, because some of the challenges that we're going to talk about tonight and that the city is facing are not easy and we need to solve problems collectively. We need out-of-the-box thinking and new ideas and that's a skill that I bring to the table. In 2019, I made a career change, I became the, one of the owners at Your Farm Market Downtown, YFM, many of you will know of. As an employer of approximately forty people located in the downtown core, I can assure you that I am invested in Woodstock. I have intentionally chose to run for city-county council based on my municipal background, my business experience, and my skill set. We're going to talk tonight, I'm sure, about homelessness, mental health, addiction. We're going to talk about downtown Woodstock, I'm assuming we'll talk about our housing crisis, transit, taxes, public safety, and any number of other topics. I invite you to go to visit my website to learn more about these issues, based on the conversations that I've had with you as I've gone door-to-door during this campaign. And that website is voteforbernia.ca. I encourage you to reach out if you have questions or comments and continue the conversation up until Election Day on October 24th. My name is Bernia, running for city-county council. I want to thank our organizers, Unifor, for hosting us tonight and for Rogers TV for making this platform accessible to our community. I look forward to answering your questions.
Thank you, my name is Deb Tate and I'm once again running to be your city-county counselor. Thank you to Unifor for their hard work and their invitation and thanks to everyone who came tonight. I'm here to listen to your concerns and explain what I would like to serve the city of Woodstock for four more years. My dedication to service and my commitment to our community started at a young age. I was raised to have a very strong work ethic, volunteering at the local rowing club, organizing the local Cherry Fox Run, and was also a committed girl guide and active in sports in the community. When I became a parent and my children entered school, I got involved with their sports and, and local school activities. As they grew, it seemed to be a natural progression for me to run for city council. I have a positive record of accomplishments for our community and I'm proud of the service that I've offered to the city. My outlook as a city counselor is simple, taxpayers come first. There have been many incidents in the past term where I used my voice to stand up for the residents of our city and their hard-earned tax dollars. For example, in the last six months, Oxford County attempted to take over Woodstock's water service and the thirty million dollars in water reserves that were paid for by Woodstock tax residents. I worked with my colleagues, the union, and city staff to ensure that our water reserves and state services stay here in the city. One of the biggest issues facing us today is homelessness, addiction, and mental health. At county council this term, I introduced a motion for a twenty-four-seven shelter that will help our neighbors who need it most. Additionally, I was heavily involved in the research and passing of a plan which will fix our downtown, address homelessness, and make our community safer for all. I encourage you to take a look at it on the city's website. Our job is not done and this will be a major focus of my next term on council if I am reelected. I want to continue to fight for funding for this shelter and work together to find more ways to address homelessness. I want to keep fighting to revitalize our city center because I know there's so much more work to do. If we want this to happen, we need an experienced and hard-working voice to get it done. As the city grows, there seems to be no end to the needs or demands of the services on the city, but at the end of the day, there's only so much the taxpayer can afford, so it's important that council is careful and deliberate in spending taxpayer money. There are a lot of challenges that our community faces, but I'm sure that we can overcome them by working together. I'm someone who stands up for what I believe in and the people that I represent. I have the experience and know-how to fight for hard-working taxpayers of our city. I was raised in Woodstock, I raised my children here, this is my home. It has always been, it is a wonderful city and I want to continue to build on its strengths. We all want Woodstock to stay the friendly city, let's make that happen. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Paul Plant and I'm running for city and county council in the next upcoming municipal election. My family moved to Woodstock in nineteen sixty and I've been a resident for the majority of years since. I'm married to my wife Kathy and have two adult daughters. I attended Rufford Lower University and the Business School at Ivy Business School at Western where I earned a BA and an MBA. I was the Development Commissioner for over two decades and a past Woodstock City Counselor. I also worked for the interior government before and after my tenure in Woodstock. In addition to a range of voluntary, in addition, I have a range of voluntary experience such as the Red Cross, United Way, Fanshawe College, Woodstock District Community Complex, and the Chamber of Commerce, to name a few. For a period of time now, I've felt the city has been lacking in vision and creativity. I have the necessary skills to enhance this part of the governance process and have proven my ability to work as part of a team. I began considering whether or not I would return to public service, but the final push was the attempt by Oxford County Council to take over the water distribution operations for the city of Woodstock. I believe the county has often not been operating in the best interest of the city. I believe the county has often not been operating in the best interest of the city. The latest attempt and other past takeovers include the seizing of millions of dollars of city monies raised at the local level. Woodstock accounts for over forty percent of the county's budget and does not get a fair return from county programs and initiatives. Canada Census figures show that Woodstock has also fallen behind in terms of representation at County Council with only thirty percent of the votes. With a population near fifty percent of the county total, Woodstock must push for representation through population models. Homelessness is something that needs to be addressed, no question. We must continue to work with the county, local, regional agencies and boards, and senior levels of government to find solutions to this issue. The viability and sustainability of Woodstock's downtown is another item warranting close attention. This visible and important component of our city's fabric must be supported in its rejuvenation process. The time has come to get serious about a second community complex at Cowan Fields. We must ensure that the orderly and timely development of these lands over the medium to long term. The city is also experiencing shortages of industrial lands in the foreseeable future, coupled with high residential absorption rates, that suggests that further urban expansion may be warranted. And of course, fiscal responsibility at both levels of local government must be continued as well during this time of growth. Please take the opportunity to go to my website at voteforpaulplant.com or Facebook to find more about myself, my platform, and where I stand on various issues. Let's put Woodstock first.
Okay, so that ends the opening remarks. We're going to move into the questions. I remind the audience that these questions come from you via email to us, and the most generated question and the most popular question or frequent question, however you want to word it, are those that we are using, but they do come from you. Remind everyone that we are now starting from eighteen, or seventeen, coming back down to one, so we're answering in reverse for the use of the microphones. Question one: All levels of government, including municipalities, have a role to play in addressing the housing crisis in Oxford County and taking action to end homelessness in our community. How will you work to end homelessness and housing instability in Oxford County?
Questions for you, Mr. Plant?
Well, first of all, it is a very complicated issue and is a result of many things that have come together, like mental health, drug abuse, and the actual lack of housing. Well, Woodstock doesn't have a direct role or mandate in social services, the county does, but there are still things that Woodstock can do to make the process faster and smoother in terms of development of new properties and zoning and other development-related issues. The county has been providing some relief in this regard, but the real problem is we're not getting the support from the senior levels of government that we should be getting. I think there's a good coalition of working groups between the city, the county, and police departments and many agencies that are all on the same page, which is nice, because quite often when you get a variety of groups together, they end up building silos, and I don't see any of that happening. They all have a common purpose and are wishing to proceed.
Thank you very much, Paul. Same question to you, Deb.
On the issue of homelessness, I have to agree, it's a very complicated issue. I think if we had an answer for it, every city across the North America would have fixed this issue. Done a lot of research on it, it's a lot of mental health, addiction issue, that's one of the reasons I brought the motion forward for the shelter. After five o'clock, there seem to be no services for the people in Woodstock that needed it most. So once this is up and running to its full capacity, there will be help. Yes, we have a shortage of housing, we have multiple partners we're working with at County, Indwell, we help fund. It is, it is difficult, as we say, every municipality is dealing with this, but we have to be receptive to the ideas that come forward and move on with that. Thanks.
Thank you. Bernie?
Homelessness and our housing crisis are two key priorities for me as a candidate, and I know that across the board that it's all, it's important to all of us. So a number of issues, a number of services are already being provided. We do have Operation Sharing with the Inn and College Avenue Church. We've been hearing about twenty-four-seven services. It's a huge step forward from where we were just a few months ago. We do have Rapid Access Addiction Medicine, or RAM, which is a walk-in clinic facility for folks struggling with alcohol and opioid, opioid use. Where are we lacking? Detox beds. People have to travel outside of this community for detox and for rehab. Our goal should be to offer recovery in the community, and that should be a part of our plan. As far as housing crisis, we do have Indwell, we do have organizations who are providing rent-to-income geared housing, but we need to be proactive in providing development opportunities that include affordable, attainable, and everyday housing for our entire community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Maybe by the time we get down to number one, we'll have the answer on how we can fix the problem, because it is not only ours, as I think Deb said, this is right across North America, I mean, it's right across the world. We, at the county, we use every available dollar we have to encourage development of affordable housing. We have been filtering all the money that has come from the other two levels of government, flowing it through to projects, as in supporting Operation Sharing and the twenty-four-seven shelter. And we've also provided staff to Operation Sharing so that people who are experiencing homelessness can have a direct contact, not having to come to the county building, but when they're going to Operation Sharing for other services, we're there to assist them and guide them as well. Has been mentioned, Indwell has been a great partner, and they have a new project that they've been working on.
Thank you very much. Chad Street?
Again, it's, this issue is a very, you know, all across North America, and then I think it's, basically all comes down to mental health, domestic violence, and drug abuse. We need to focus back on our resources. I know there's a lot of nonprofit organizations out there that are working hard, and I think we just need to collaborate with each other, just, you know, figure out what's, what's working for who, and just going back to the basics, and what we should have done five years ago, ten years ago, we can always start now. And we might not see the results right away, but we will see them in the years to come. It might be in a year, two years, five years. Again, Indwell, I've done, you know, my, I did the two for Indwell, Operation Sharing Inn, and they are all providing really great services. And again...
Thank you very much.
I'm not going to reiterate everything that you've already heard, it's beating a broken record at this point. We do have a lot of issues with mental health and addiction, which is a big part of our homeless in our downtown, not just a housing problem as well. We need to bring services to these people. These people will not generally go to get services. You have to bring it to them. To actually fix the housing problem, it's not cheap, and there is no fast solution. It's going to take province, county, federal, and municipal to address the issue, and it's a way bigger problem than we're going to be able to solve in the next few hours. Thanks.
Thank you.
Again, I agree with Jay, I can't reiterate what everybody else has been saying, but I think, I think, you know, getting to our youth right now, before the problem gets to them and they end up on the street, I think that's very important. Secondly, I've been looking at a working farm, a working farm with, with small homes, small piece of land, you give homeless, I know there's a lot of complex issues there, but there's also counseling, drug rehab. It's happened in other cities, smaller cities, before it got out of control. Right now, I know it seems like it's out of control, but it's, can be managed right now. And if we do this farm, it gives them hope, it gives them something to do, it gives them a job, and they also, it can provide training for them for other things.
Thank you very much.
In regards to homelessness, first we need to understand why those folks are there. Yes, mental health and addiction is a big part of it. Sometimes it's because of bad luck, sometimes it's because of depression, there's many different reasons. So we have to identify first, why are those folks there? We also need, as a city and a county, to work with the community programs and partners that already are providing very valuable services, but getting everybody aligned with seats at the same table to collaborate. To everybody's point here, the candidates, it's, it's worldwide, nobody has the solution, and not any one of us is a subject matter expert to provide that solution. We must collaborate, we must work together. In regards to housing, so many residents are in desperate need of affordable housing, so let's make sure that we continue the good work to affect the planning and development that includes all walks of life, and to not only just exist, but to also live. This is home, everybody's their neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have to agree with what Jay said, and the fact that the resources need to come to the people, they are not going to go to the resources necessarily. That's a huge piece that we need to advocate for on both city, county, provincial, and federal. That's where a lot of the work needs to come from, but I'm going to take it back to what my core is, and that's about youth. If we don't start at the roots, if we don't get them while they're young and vulnerable, we're going to lose them. This is a cycle that will continue forever. Growing up here, I've watched it. I've lost friends to mental health, I've lost friends to addiction. I've seen it happen, we're talking about in the nineties now, we're in twenty-twenty's. We need to move forward with that. Youth are the core of our community, they are the success of our community. We need to start to focus more on them, and that will help stop this perpetual cycle that we continue to see.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, I'll keep mine very short. I think that definitely identifying the issue is the number one thing, working closely with nonprofit partners, and pretty much trying to find a solution, like maybe create a program to identify if it's, because there's different levels of homelessness too, right? Mostly being addiction and mental health. So I think identifying the problem is the number one step. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on.
In my opening speech, I mentioned the fact that I've been through Operation Sharing in a lot of the facilities. One, another example is 175 Spring Bank, there used to be a place of worship on that property. The County of Oxford put out a request for proposals for various, well, developers or builders to suggest what they could build on that property, basically for subsidized housing. My situation or thoughts on that, and I know I'm running for city only, and I'm not a member of the Human Services Department of the County of Oxford, but I think it's time the County of Oxford actually owns more of its bricks and mortar. They really have not built anything brand-new for the last thirty years, except for that eight-unit complex that they're building currently on Parkinson Road. So it might be, think, the thing that's great, that an organization like Indwell is assisting, but there's also non-for-profits like DASO, and also Inglewood Homes that are assisting. But at the end of the day, I think the County of Oxford needs to hire more social workers and have some transitional housing that they sort of own the bricks and mortar for, and work things that way.
Thank you very much. DeWitt?
Homelessness is a lifestyle that we, in the near future, will not be eradicating. So I think it may be best to figure out what the best-case scenario lifestyle is, and find a way to work people towards that lifestyle, and then find a way to transition them out of that lifestyle, so that they can integrate into what we consider our lifestyle, so it's not a case of homelessness anymore. Working with the youth is very important, so that we can nip it in the butt at that end of things, and there's a few other answers and a few other solutions, and we just need to listen, and then apply the right ones.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Well, this helps.
So I sit on the Board of Operation Sharing, and it has been the most, you know, learning curve, biggest privilege to serve on that board. And in the last year, we've experienced a new ED, Educational Director, and we've seen huge changes. And when we're at the door, it's interesting how many people in our community aren't necessarily aware of the services that are out there, and the services that are working tirelessly to have people find homes, or have people find food, or have people find services. So I'm a big advocate to continue to work hard and to support our frontline services, because as we keep hearing over and over, you know, it's, it's across the world, this issue, but it's definitely having an understanding about what is available in our community so that we can continue to spread, spread the word, and also continue to help them in any way that they, that they need. And also on the housing aspect for that, for that piece, I think we just need more supply and a variety. I think that there's...
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, not just homelessness, but all three, the big three. There's no quick fix. We have to petition not only the province, but the federal government for, and we also have to form both a short-term for the coming winter and a long-term plan for other winters. It's got to be with all levels of government, we can't do it on our own. But the only way to do it, and I quote Frederick Douglass again, the nineteenth-century civil rights activist, "Agitate, agitate, agitate." You want something done? Give it to a senior who's retired. He's got lots of time and loves chewing on people's ankles. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alfred.
Thank you, and we've talked about the homelessness, and I know that we all have to work together on that, but I want to speak to you about the affordable housing. I am on the Board for Woodstock Nonprofit Housing, and we have two properties that we have been managing for many, many years now, and seniors on Kenton Canterbury, and we are in the midst of building a ninety-eight unit apartment building, which will be open for occupancy starting in January, we're hoping. And we also have started another project, it'll be a forty-eight unit project, and that'll be for, it's affordable housing, and we're going to also be working with DASO to have some moms and children move into that, so this is very different than what we've had before. The one other thing that I...
Connie?
I would like to see a Housing First model as done in other comparable-sized cities like Medicine Hat. Housing First recognizes the human rights of the individual and has been proven to be the most effective and cost-efficient method of uplifting vulnerable, vulnerable people. So we first supply the housing and then wrap around services for whatever need it is. Regarding affordable homes, we need to address missing middle housing, and we can provide affordability by offering more variety to our housing market. We can look at duplexes, triplexes, and small purpose-built apartments as an alternative to single-family homes. And we can encourage this type of growth by upzoning, removing barriers such as exclusionary zoning, which prevents developers and homeowners from creating additional units on their property. We must also prioritize rent geared-to-income housing. When we define affordable rents at eighty percent of market, we are still left with rents that are far too high. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I believe with Connie Lauter and Jay, and that, but the biggest problem is we don't have enough geared-income housing. If we can correct the geared-income housing and end up and get that, we've got a lot of the problem beat, because when I look at the homeless out there, it's not just young, it's every age. I see an elderly fellow out there, he's got to be sixty, sixty-five years old, and he, he's end up and got a grocery cart wheeling around town. Like, so it's not just the youth, it's not the young people, we need retraining, we need more geared income, because if you're on your own, you cannot afford the rent and afford the stuff today if you're on your own. You, you just can't afford it. So we need more geared income, and if we can get those people off the, off the street, we can end up and correct, correct our downtown and get back to where we don't have many homeless. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Going to the second most popular question brought in from the community. Leadership and teamwork are going to be vital. What skill set and experience do you bring in this area?
What skillset and experience do you bring in this area? Question to you.
Want to repeat that?
Leadership and teamwork are going to be vital. What skillset and experience do you bring to this area?
Well, in this area, I believe we end up, we all have to work together. We got to work together with the mayor, we got to work together with the citizens of Woodstock, we got to work together with all our services, right straight across the board. You know, CEO, James Street, City Hall, everybody. You know, we got to work together as a team. If we don't work together as a team, we can't bring the right things to the city, we can't clash against each other. We got to be able to bring things forth in the right manner to make everybody happy. And it's going to be hard to make everybody happy, but if we can all communicate, and communication is a big thing today. If we don't communicate, we can't correct the problem. Thank you.
I lead with compassion. I want to see our city provide for the vulnerable, for our seniors, our students and families, and the environment with the same standard of care. I am an effective listener, and I am approachable. I welcome your feedback and approach this work with a desire to collaborate with residents. A strong leader is also an effective member of a team, which is why I lead with respect as a core value. Respect for myself, the residents, but also for the candidates who will eventually be my teammates. I have deep respect for your passion, your support, and desire to build a better city for all. Lastly, I'm an effective leader because I stay curious. I am a lifelong learner and recognize I am not the subject, or I am not the expert of these subject matters. I strive to build relationships with experts, staff, and community members to achieve the best outcomes for the community.
Just before you start, Connie, I'm going to ask you to remind, just a friendly reminder, please turn your phones off, or turn them on mute. Thank you. Go ahead, Connie.
Thank you. I'm dedicated, hardworking, a good listener, communicator. I work with staff, and I believe that's very important. I work as a team, and it's good to express your thoughts, but it's good to listen to others, and you might go into a council meeting and thinking one thing, and once you've heard the other people express theirs, then you have to listen and work together. So that's what I bring to the table.
Sorry for the extra noise. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Leadership and teamwork. What do I bring? For the last 50 years, I've sat on many organizations, many committees, provincial, municipal, community organizations. I find leadership is by consensus, not by decree. I've sat, as I said, sat on many committees. I was president of the Paralegal Society of Ontario during paralegal regulation. Many of you don't know what that is, making paralegals part of the Law Society of Upper Canada. So with all my various experiences, I'm very good at teamwork, especially after refereeing hockey and umpiring ball for 36 years, which makes me exceptionally skilled at herding cats. Thank you.
Some of my strengths, I would say I am strong with communication. I do not shy away from conflict. I am a team player, team leader. I look at our business like a team, and we have a healthy work environment, and I hope that the next term of council makes this a priority. You hear often in politics, you need to have thick skin, or it's par for the course, but I feel like one of the biggest reasons I'm running is to try to change that, because we can be more inclusive, and we can educate and learn from those before us. So I'm up for the task, and I would say that I'm very eager to get to work.
I am a small business owner in downtown Woodstock. I joined the BIA once, shortly after I took that location, because I saw what was happening downtown. I am a father, I am a coach, a mentor. I started a not-for-profit with a few friends of mine 10 years ago that is centered around the youth, and we advocate for mentorship through arts and athletics. Throughout that process, I've learnt a large number of things, not only in that regard, but in what it takes to start an organization like that. So I've learned a lot. I'm a fast learner, a great communicator, and most importantly, I'm a great listener.
I truly believe in words like dedication, but also being able to have guidance and understanding, and someone who does their homework. In other words, guidance means somebody asks you a question, or someone's going to follow you, and down the correct way. When the Recreation Advisory Committee, for example, which I've been a member of for 21 years, and chair of it for seven years, lobbying might be a term you would use, for example, the amount of times that we did a PowerPoint demonstration or something for city council, explaining the ball numbers and why the Cowan Fields Project was necessary to begin with, in the first place, to be able to make that part of creation. But I've also been a chair of many other events in Woodstock, like the Sports Celebrity Dinner, and I was also master of ceremonies for that event for six years as well. And I think leadership is one thing, by showing people the correct example as to how to be able to display yourself in public, and to have people understand that this is the correct way of doing things, if that makes sense, because of the fact that you take it something like a planning issue for the city of Woodstock. Thanks.
Well, I am a great communicator, great listener, great troubleshooter, work well with others, and yeah, just come up with great ideas, and I like to definitely get my hands involved in whatever the situation is, and that's it. I take it one issue at a time, and address it, and try to figure it out. So, that's it.
When I say yes to something, I give 150%, and then I do another 150% beyond that. If I've said yes to dedicating to something, and there's a number of you in the room who have worked with me in the past, I can attest that I will give you my all, and I will do everything I can. I'm a listener, I'm a talker, I'm a leader, I'm a team player. I've learned a lot in governance, as well as making important but critical decisions during my time as a board member through a number of different organizations. I give it my all, and I'm telling you, I can't really put it any other way than to say that I'm going to give every little bit of my effort to represent you as a citizen of the town, of the city that we call home. I am a voice that you can trust.
So what is leadership? The Oxford Dictionary definition is "the action of leading a group of people or an organization." In simple words, leadership is about taking risks and challenging, pardon me, challenging the status quo. Leaders motivate others to achieve something new and better. Leaders have vision. Volunteerism is defined as "the practice of working as a volunteer, especially in community service." I have lots of experience in leadership, whether it was as a hockey coach, a member of a volunteer fire department, recruiting, training, and leading Toyota's emergency response team, being the chair of the Workplace Safety Competition at Skills Canada Ontario for 11 years, the chair of the Conestoga College PAC Committee, which stands for Program Advisory Committee, as well as being a visionary and leader of over 27 team members at my former business. Thank you.
One of my businesses is event production. So I have many arms, many gears, many aspects happening, as you can imagine, and one of my jobs is to make sure all these gears work together. But not only that, is to appreciate what each gear does. I'm there to tell these people what to do, but I'm also there to listen to what they have to say.
Working in emergency services, I've learned quickly that leadership and teamwork go hand in hand. If you have a great leader, you can have great teamwork. If you have a bad leader, you have no teamwork. We have to work anonymously with each other and the departments that we have. We work on a motto at our work from Steve Jobs that says, "It makes no sense to hire smart people and tell them what to do. If you have intelligent people, let them do their work." That's teamwork.
I think respectful to others' views. Everybody comes to the table with different experiences and different backgrounds, and just being respectful is one of the traits of a good leader. And I have that, and you know, I respect everybody in that sense, listening, hard, I'm a hard worker. I bring different perspective, diversity to the table. I'm accountable, and I want to be the bridge builder between the communities. And I've been on different boards and committees, and I'm learning every day. And I think leader should lead by example, so don't, you know, you should be the example of how you want your team to be. So I think that's one of the other. And just always be prepared. Doesn't matter what kind of meeting or event you're going to, always be prepared, and show up.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that, I know that I'm committed, I have a lot of experience. Active listening and working to problem-solve, I believe, are just some of my skills. I always do my homework, and I've been involved in so many aspects of the city over the years. I have knowledge in going forward in all the different areas, but I think what has always been the best is I've had great mentorship over the years by past politicians. And one who gave me great advice very early on in the game was when you walk through the doors of a council meeting, when you walk out of the hall, into the hallway, you leave what was ever in that room there, and then you go out and you leave it all behind you, so that you don't create any hardships between people or draw lines, so that you're always working together. And I think that's what's most important, to have to keep an open mind and be willing to work with people, even though they may have different ideas. That's the only way we can go forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. This really is an interesting question, because you have 17 people here who are running individual campaigns, and we are elected as individuals to serve as a team, which is an interesting concept. I would say that in my four years of ownership at Your Farm Market and working with 40 employees, leadership has been a day-to-day-to-day experience. Working with 14, 15, 18-year-olds, as well as adults, the opportunity to learn from them, and to coach and teach them, and lead them and guide them, has been a huge honor for me over the last four years. As far as teamwork, we actually had the opportunity this morning at the mayoral debate to have a conversation amongst a number of people about what economic development is, and Brad Hammond happened to be there, and to talk about how we have shared resources over the last number of years to collaborate rather than compete. That is teamwork.
I'll just start with my professional career. I got some really good advice. I was going in to manage a bank that had had problems, and I was going to a different city, and a very wise man, my father said to me, "You're going there to manage, to do a job, and to show leadership. You're not there to be a friend, but you're there to earn the respect and to lead them." That's always stayed with me, it's the best piece of advice, and going forward in politics, it's helpful. When we were doing, having all these discussions about the homeless, what was going on, I finally said to city staff, "Write me a motion, I'm going to take it to council, I've had enough of this, let's go." We did the motion, I put it on the agenda, and one of my fellow county councillors, Marcus Ryan, called me and said, "Can I second it?" We worked together, we rallied the whole entire council, got staff and council behind it, and we got the 24/7 shelter passed unanimous. Sometimes we have differences in council chambers, Marcus Ryan and I have had yelling matches at council, but when we leave, we have the same agenda, it's for the best of the people, and we work together.
I think for, well, I know, for, to be a good leader, you have to have vision and be creative. You have to be able to communicate your ideas, you have to be able to listen for the feedback you get from the people you're communicating with, and you have to be willing to accept different ideas and different ways of approaching things. And you lead by example, and you'll be a problem solver. Best example I can think of where leadership was involved for a very diverse group was a community complex. And we had hockey, we had gymnastics, we had a little theater, we had, I think at one point, rowing club, and trying to get all those people to work together and approach council to get the project off the ground was quite a feat, and it worked out quite well, because we have the complex.
The third question from the community. What would you do if elected to implement changes to police services in the city for the better? Or do you think it's as good as a gift? Including making our schools safer from weapon threats? What is your stand on making Woodstock safer for our children? Questions to you.
Well, I believe that generally speaking, our police services are doing an excellent job. We could stand with some more patrols downtown, and better responses to some of the homelessness situation. I know the police don't like doing it, but they're the law keepers that look out for the safety of this community. We have to make sure that downtown is a place that's perceived as being safe, and more people will come downtown, because you're not going to get anywhere if you don't, in the rejuvenation, if you don't get more people coming to the core area. That's pretty well it.
Right now, 40% of our taxes go to police and fire. I know everybody's answer is to hire more police officers. Last term, we did hire four more, and two downtown, committed to the downtown, but it's very difficult with all the challenges going forward. And one call could take up to four to five hours of an officer's time and report, so it's difficult. We all are aware that we need more proactive, and I think with the new chief and the deputy chief there are aware of that, and we may see a change, but also policing has changed over the years to its more mental health calls, and not just policing, which takes more time. But I don't think the answer is just more police, it just has to be where you spend the time.
Thank you. I'm a business owner in the downtown. I live downtown, and my daughter goes to school downtown, and so I see police presence quite regularly. And I have to say that every time I've had to call at Your Farm Market or YFM, the police response has been incredible. The service that they have delivered has been thorough, it has been professional, and I have a deep appreciation and respect for the work that they're doing in our community. I would say that when I first moved to this community, and we're talking about making Woodstock safe for our children, when my 14-year-old came home from school one day, distraught and having anxiety over an experience of having to step over a homeless person in the downtown, I have to say that that was not the experience that I wanted for my 14-year-old in this community. I know our police department is working hard, they do have a tremendous amount of resources behind them. If we can fix addiction and mental health and get resources, I do believe that will free up our police department to deal with other issues and situations. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree that about adding more police officers, mine, the city is growing, and we will have to address whether we're able to cover or service all of our residents, not just in the downtown core. I know that with our new police chief, it's, they're working very hard to respond to all the calls, but of course, they're prioritized as to their extent of need. They also have the M-Hard, which is a collaboration between the Woodstock Police Services and Canadian Mental Health, because as it's been stated before, a lot of the problems is mental health, and as well as the drug addiction. The city has hired security in the downtown core to be there 24/7, to make sure that if there are some issues, things are moved along, or the police is called, or police are called as well. police are called as well.
Thank you very much. Jess Creek.
I think there is always an opportunity for more training in diversity, culture, mental health, because when police officers are out on the road, they're not just doing policing, they're doing a lot of other, you know, filling in a lot of roles as well. And I think just being proactive as well, not waiting for things to happen to address them, just being proactive, going out in the community. And again, public safety is really important. Road safety, as we're seeing with the population growing, speeding is another issue that I'm hearing a lot. You know, people are doing hundred, over a hundred and eighty zones around schools and stuff, and I know the police are, you know, patrolling, they are in the areas, school zones, and yeah.
Thank you very much.
Working with frontline officers every day is part of our job. We're with them every day, be it mental health, addiction, abuses, or anything like that. More frontline officers is not necessarily always the answer that we require. Sometimes supportive services in the background is what they need. So that's something we'll have to take a look at as a council if I'm elected. It's one of the things I do want to look at.
I think our police are doing an absolutely amazing job, and it really annoys me when I hear some citizens criticizing their work. Their hands are tied, it's catch and release, and they have no say in the matter. They spend hours, hours with, so when they've arrested, and they're on the street the next day, they've got to arrest them again. That's not their fault. I think, as Jay said, it's the behind the scenes, it's people supporting the police that we need with mental health issues, because the police aren't necessarily trained to deal with these issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we need to look at all safety measures and remedies available to our policing. That includes programs and services to help make the schools, the streets, and our neighborhoods safer. Our police officers are our subject matter experts. We, as councillors, are not. Yes, fiscal responsibility is huge. We can't spend money that we don't have, but we also need to listen to them, we need to support them. We also need to engage our community and listen to the residents with their concerns and support one another. I don't even know if we have Neighborhood Watch anymore in the city of Woodstock, or if it's, you know, all but expired, but there are so many tools in the tool chest, we just need to tap into them. Thank you.
I just want to recognize that South Simcoe is currently grieving the loss of two officers at this time. So this is something that's not just happening in our community, it's something that needs to be looked at closely. If we increase policing, we do increase expenses, but maybe police need to be accompanied by victim services, more support from CMHA, and other supports from other resources within our community. And again, I'm going to sound like a broken record, but let's go back to our youth. If we're scared of what's happening in our, in our schools, where is the support for the youth? Where is the city supporting the youth? Where are we getting this? This is not youth falling through the cracks, this is a gaping hole that we have seen in our city for many years that we just keep putting a mat over and hope that our youth don't fall through, and they continue to fall through that.
Well, I think that the police are doing a great job, considering that they are not at full capacity. I think we do need more presence for fast drivers, for security. We cannot outsource our security or law enforcement. We should definitely take care of it as a community.
Thank you. Mark.
Thanks. I truly believe it starts right with the provincial side of things, with the court system being modified to be able to move cases through quicker so that there's a way to not only take the mental health angle and stuff, but to get certain people off the street. Addictions is one thing, and the amount of time the police have to spend in a multi-force service trying to stop things like drug trafficking, they really are spending more time doing that than they sometimes can do, helping some of the people with some of the earlier side of things, like vandalism and shoplifting and stuff like that, that gets them into the entry-level part of things. The Ochs County Community Health Center also does a great job with their health buses as they visit people and offer CMHA assistance to, whether they be at the twenty-four-seven Operation Sharing, or even at the encampments that they go visit. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
I believe that the police are doing a great job. Everyone, in most cases, doing whatever they're doing, they're doing the best that they can do. Education at every level is probably something that's lacking, whether it be the committees in the police services, whether it's us as parents educating our children, whether the teachers are educating the students, whether our council is educating the citizens, so on and so forth. Everybody is affected by it, therefore, everybody has a part to play in fixing the solution.
Thank you very much.
I know. I'd like to see more services working alongside police. I think Mark mentioned the mobile health unit bus. These things are effective in community. We want the police to stay within their scope, which is to police. When I called the Branford Fire Department just to talk about how they work over there, specifically around how many firehouses they had, they spoke with me about how in the last ten years, they've also invested in health and safety and fitness programs so that their frontline workers in their community are also looked after. Frontline workers, police, perhaps EMS, fire, they also have a higher risk of PTSD and other illnesses, so ensuring in any case that we're also doing the best job and that we're looking after our mental health so that we can give out what, you know, how we're, we can give out, I'm having a train of thought. Sorry, freezing. Anyhow, I'm going to pass it now. Pardon me.
Policing is time-consuming, there's no doubt about that, and it's a very thankless job, just like officiating minor sports. Policing, you're expected to be perfect the first time out and improve thereafter. Some, you know, when you've got more population, you have more problems, unfortunately, you need more police. The cry of "defund the police," we've all heard that. I'm sorry, that's not sensible. You need, we need more constables, beat and bike patrols. My wife works at the library in Branford downtown. They put on, Branford Police has put on beat patrols over the last six months, and they've greatly reduced by as much as fifty percent the incidents at the library in keeping people safe. Again, we have to petition the federal and provincial governments. If the Six Nations Police can get 1.9 billion from the federal government to combat their gang and drug war, we can certainly get something from more police from the feds and the provincial government. And we have to increase support services as well. We can't have police doing everything, they simply can't do it. Thank you.
Thank you. If we need more police, we must be prepared to pay. Everyone wants to cut taxes, but if we want the police, it costs, it costs us money. We have an excellent service, let them do their job, we must support them. I spoke to the chief recently about a complaint I had when I was campaigning about petty theft, and he's, and I found that many homes have securities. If you report stolen and photos, stolen items and photos, they can track these incidents, and they're pleased to get this information. They completely, continually send out emails on problem areas where officers can concentrate their patrols during the night. So let the police do their jobs. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If we don't want to add more police, we need to address crime and regard crime as a symptom of our social condition. To reduce crime, we must treat the underlying issues like poverty, food insecurity, lack of opportunities, lack of connection, and unaffordability. We need proactive solutions aimed at the real reasons crime is increasing. We need a holistic approach to discover what has pushed people to these lengths, not as a choice, but as, but rather out of necessity. We can build affordability in the city with housing, transit, daycare. We can provide opportunities for connection and relationship, relationship building through programming, community groups, and recreation. We need opportunities to get trained and retrained in a profession leading to good-paying jobs in the community. These are proactive, proactive solutions to ease our reliance on policing.
Thank you very much. Dave.
Thank you. I'm glad this question was asked, because so far, nobody's mentioned this. I spent two hours with the police chief already, finding out what he needs, what he expects from the previous council, and where we need to go in the future. Rod and I spent two hours together, and everything, very nice guy, very new police chief, great with everything, great with what he expects, and I've done the same thing with the fire chief. So I know what I'm out for, what we need to do as a council, and where we need to go. And I've done this on James Street, I've done this at City Hall with the CEO, with Len, the guy that looks after the property and what property we buy and everything. I've talked to him all, I've spent anywhere from an hour to two hours with everybody. So I know what I'm in for, and I know what we need to do. So I've done my homework, and I hope I can end up and please everybody and make everybody happy with what, with what I'm trying to do for the public.
Thank you very much. We're going to move to, looking at the time, our last question of the evening before we go into the two minutes closing. So the last question, starting with Dave. There have been numerous complaints about the road projects undertaken by the city, the county of Oxford this summer, and how it affects emergency response time for fire, police, and ambulance. How would you address this issue?
Well, I end up and address this issue is, you know, we got to work better together with the county, like Van Ave and the Seventeenth Line being done at the same time, that was a disaster waiting, waiting to happen. If there'd been any major problem on the north side of the dam, we would have ended up and been in big, big trouble, because, you know, that, that should have never happened. I don't know how that slipped through council's hands and county council's hands, and somehow it did, it slipped through. But, you know, that's neither here nor there, but we got to look to the future, make sure that things like this doesn't happen again, and, and just go forth and be prepared and have county talk to us maybe more than what they are. It's like, you know, there's a lack of communication or something there, because like, like things like this shouldn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Leah.
So fire and ambulance are vital services, which will require continued support whether we grow up or out as a community. I concur, the traffic, the construction has been a nightmare. But we can do better to support these emergency services by working to reduce their caseload through improvements to other areas of our city life. We can institute prevention programs to lead to fewer domestic violence calls. Addiction services will lead to fewer overdose calls, and designing safer streets will lead to fewer road accidents. We could also, we should look to have additional fire help or hub for first responders built in the northeast end of the city, and do that through a community benefit agreement rather than paying for it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I can agree. I live in Sally Creek, and the traffic there has been horrendous, and there was, was an emergency case the other day that this traffic was stopped on the bridge, and the fire truck had to get through, and it was a touch and go to get that truck through. We have to see that, work with the county and see that this never happens again, that all of this, they had the Intercip Road closed, and the county Seventeen, Road Seventeen closed, and our Fifty-Nine Highway closed. So I think it's important that our staff works with the county and see that we never go through this again. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Having lived in a town at one time, had a singular bridge over the Grand River, Caledonia, every time there was bridge work on that ancient bridge, there was always concerns about emergency services. All I'm going to say is, you know, being on the outside looking in, it takes better planning, more oversight, better communication, those are the keys between the city and the county and between respective planning departments. I'm not saying council, councillors should be there to look over everybody's shoulder. I prefer holding feet to the fire. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this area was also, the north end on the other side of Piddock was also an issue four years ago. It was one of the biggest fears and concerns that we heard at the door, and we're still hearing them now, about will services reach us? There is a school going out there, more growth, and I just think that communication can always be improved. I think Connie had mentioned that they hope at the county level, this never happens again, but to make sure that the citizens know either what's happening, what's planned for, and community engagement is absolutely vital as we move forward.
Thank you very much. Dwayne.
This is an example of a lack of communication across multiple parties. As we all say, agree, whether you're a citizen or a council or whoever, it shouldn't happen. We hope that it doesn't happen again. Construction is happening all across Ontario. It's no different here. The expansion of the population has impacted such things. We're now seeing the effect of that change, and these construction roads, bad timing as it is, that was the effect of it. So moving forward, if we can plan for it, that's in our best interest, and open lines of communication are what we need to work towards.
I think communication, as has been mentioned several times, is very important, but I think people also might forget that County Road Four was halfway closed, only going one lane, and then the lights would switch and it goes the other lane all about the same time, and we'd, Canada's Outdoor Farm Show go through. So I'm also agreeing, because having Huron Street be a two-year construction project has also been very difficult, and those are all county projects. The one thing that's interesting about the city of Woodstock, as far as communication goes, looking forward, the city does use a five-year rolling budget plan for capital projects. So for example, if the county looked at our budget for next year, assuming it gets passed as it sits, next year, Van Sittard gets done from Oxford down to Mill Street, and Wellington Street North, right in front of Kate's house, goes from Ingersoll Ave to Devonshire, gets dug up. So that's kind of already in the Woodstock's plans, they're probably already getting requests for proposals, or guesstimating how much that might cost, because that's going to be part of our twenty-three budget in the city of Woodstock, and let's just hope the, the county of Oxford doesn't overlap again.
Francesco.
So yes, I think that we do need to expand communication with the county in regards to getting services to the north end, all across. It's, it's going to be, it's going to be difficult. So Woodstock is expanding, and we are going to have to increase our services, fire, police, that's what I think.
This was clearly communication being a major issue in this fact, but what we also know is that we learn from experiences. So this is an experience that folks like myself, who are seeking a seat on city council, will learn from, and keep this in mind as we move forward, and continue to make sure that there is clear communication between the city and the county. In speaking with the fire department, they spoke about an incident in the north end of, north of Piddock, where they quote-unquote called it a white knapper, and due to the, due to the construction, they got there, unfortunately, that structure was lost, the structures beside it were also damaged, but they said had it been just a few more minutes, it may have been a lot worse. So these are, these are, these are things that we learn from, we improve on them, and we move forward.
So fire, police, and paramedics should be, if they're not, consulted about such plans, such projects. If I'm planning to reseal my driveway, I don't cut off the entire driveway without a ramp or something else to access my house, whether it's through the side door, through the front door, through the back door. So we need to make sure that we do that for our emergency services. Either A, alternate routes and access to make sure that those vital emergency services can reach their destination, B, maybe to stagger or stage those projects, and I understand that it's county a hundred percent, so there's definitely communication issues there. However, that's also exceptionally irresponsible of county if that's the case. That leaves us, as a city, potentially in a position of liability if our emergency services... services cannot reach their destination, as is required by different standards. Also, with the triple threat, and Mark mentioned this, there, there is also Number Four closed at the same time. We had Number Four closed, Number Seventeen being worked on, Van Ave being worked on, an entire population, probably well north of, I don't know, five thousand people, potentially with no, um, responses. Thank you.
Uh, I think this is a perfect example of the county, uh, thinking, though, I think they know what's best for Woodstock. Um, I'm not gonna say communication, 'cause I think it's been said thirteen times already. Uh, but I think, uh, I think Woodstock's grown up now, I think we're adults. Uh, I think it might, might be time to, uh, start, uh, taking care of ourselves and maybe, uh, sort of leave some of these services to, to us, instead of letting the county decide what's best for us.
Thank you. Jay.
The, the, the roads with the Sally Creek closures out in that area, and then Four being closed, has definitely caused, uh, some delays in responses that cannot be denied by anybody or any department or services. Luckily, in paramedic services, we have a station in the north end of the county that's able to respond down if we had to for closures. There has to be better coordination between the county and the city, and having the inclusion of emergency services into those conversations, I think, would be a big deal. We have, uh, larger vehicles versus just police cruisers, ambulances are bigger than, uh, police cruisers, and the fire trucks are definitely a lot bigger. They need more room, and I know even some of the construction zones, I've seen the fire trucks go through, and literally take out the cones because they're just not wide enough on the roads, so more communication, I think, is gonna be the key. Thanks.
Yes, great.
Better communication, planning and timing between city and the county to prevent from this happening again, and also communication, uh, with the vital services like the police, EMS, and fire department, and residents as well, uh, so, so they know what they're gonna be seeing in the next, uh, few weeks in construction and getting around Woodstock.
Thank you very much. Sam.
Thank you. Definitely better coordination, communication, uh, within the city and county. Um, I think they do try, and sometimes things do get slipped through the cracks. Satellite stations, I, are already in people's minds, um, I know, um, police and fire, obviously, our city responsibility, I know the, talking with the fire chief, um, and his five-year plan, a, a substation on the north side is in his. I'm not sure about the police, and as Jay had mentioned, the paramedic, they do have response in the north, but, um, as the city grows, whether we can still make our times, um, that will be something that we would need to look at and possibly change where the stations are.
Thank you. Great.
Yes. Um, you may not know that the, the construction on, uh, Fifty-Nine North or Van Sittard Ave was actually not in the county's twenty-twenty-two plan. When you look at their plan for twenty-twenty-two, it wasn't in the budget and wasn't in the business plan. I'm not sure where between, um, that budget being passed and the shovel going into the ground, that it did get onto the schedule. I've talked to a number of different people and not a hundred percent sure how it happened. As someone, I consider myself to be a relationship builder, it's the reason why I want to represent you at city and county council, to ensure that we collaborate, that we talk through these things, so that we don't have these type of mishaps again in the future. Yes, we can learn from this, um, but I want to ensure that health, public safety is addressed and planned for as we go about future development, so that we don't put ourselves in this situation in the future.
Thank you.
Well, the first thing I think we need to recognize, as an elected, um, official, we do not get into operational issues, we are only for procedure and budget and policy. So this was a communication, um, problem between the county and the city, but as a councillor, we do not interfere, it is staff. We have a, we do have an issue with one of the department heads at the county, the reason for this problem. Um, we have well-paid CAOs that meet together and are to work it out. Right now, we're in the middle of hiring a new CA for the county, but this was, um, we have, we do have a good relationship with the county, except for this one department, and if you follow anything on council, you would see what it is, and this is one of the people that tried to take over our water. So the issue with the, um, roads, I don't think it would matter to him what inconvenience was to Woodstock, and going forward, hopefully with the hire of the new CO, we have a new, better relationship between the two department heads.
Paul.
I think what happened, uh, with Seventeen and Fifty-Nine and Four was a very unfortunate situation, and hopefully, the, the stars will not align again that that happens to be this case in a second situation. There definitely needs to be better communication. Um, from what I understand the situation, the communication was internal to the county, not really affected the city that much. And certainly in terms of satellite stations, uh, for all our emergency services, is something that's gonna have to be looked at and planned for in the next five, five or plus years.
Thank you. Sam, with the timer, we're going to go to the closing statements from all candidates. I remind all candidates that you have two minutes, and I was looking for time like I had all night to closing, and we will start with Paul Plank.
Lost my notes. Well, um, once again, I'd like to thank Uni4 and Rogers for producing this evening, and it's something that's part of the democratic process, and I think a couple other candidates that talked about should be something to do more, to try to keep the lines of communication open to, between the citizens and the governments. Um, I believe that, um, the county needs to be looked at, uh, in terms of the si- single tier is not an option in my mind at the moment, but certainly improving the two-tier system the way it is, that we need to have representation by population, so that we get a fair dispersment of rural versus urban votes. Uh, someone like Tillsenburg, he only has one vote and they're a few times the size of us, one of the smaller municipalities, and that's not right. And I also think we should have an election of warm and large during the general population, during the general election, not during, uh, first council meeting of, of county council. Um, I ask for your support on the twenty-fourth. I have the creativity and the vision to fulfill the, the, the needs of the job, and I look forward to having the opportunity to work on city-county council.
Thank you very much. Yes, great.
I'm running for reelection because I believe this is a great community. The city-county position is elected by the citizens of Woodstock, and is very important to have a strong, loud voice representing the taxpayers of Woodstock at the county, county council. I've heard, worked hard to ensure that our council, our city, sorry, has a powerful voice at the table, and ensure our needs as a growing city are met, and will continue to do so. I sent a motion to county council this term advocating for better representation at the county table. Forty percent of every dollar spent at the county comes from Woodstock taxpayers. Currently, we have three voices out of ten. I am fiscally conservative, and I'm always aware that each new program, each new staff hire, each new equipment purchase, and every new infrastructure project that we include in our budget will burden the taxpayer. In order to keep taxes affordable, the real needs of our citizens must always be met first, and spending cannot go unchecked. Each of us has just one voice, and it comes time to advocate for our city, I believe it should be a loud voice, to ensure Woodstock is represented fairly. Please elect Doug Tate for city council, October twenty-fourth.
Thank you very much. Welcome in.
I'm ready. I'm ready to get to work for you as citizens and residents of Woodstock. My name's Bernia Wheaton, and I would like to be your candidate for city-county council. I am ready to show up, to do the work, and to deliver what is needed here in Woodstock and in Oxford County. I'm ready to work with the human services department at the county to ensure that we get the programs and services around homelessness, addiction, and mental health that are so desperately needed. I'm ready to work with public works and waste management at the county to break, weekly recycling would be a really desirable outcome, and a green bin organics collection program to divert waste from our landfill and extend its life. Let's reduce that garbage. I'm ready to work with the county planning department to reduce red tape, to get construction of higher-density residential units to Woodstock, to meet the growing demand for housing. Now, more than ever, we need relevant, genuine, and forward-thinking leaders who understand the complexities of governing during times of change. I'm ready to work. These aren't easy challenges that we've talked about tonight, but to me, that means that we just need to get started at it now. I'm Bernia Wheaton, I'm asking for your vote this October. I am ready for change. Are you?
Thank you. Andrew Hope.
In closing, I believe that my track record speaks for itself. Although I know that the community and I won't agree every time, my decisions are based on research and what the majority of the city needs. It is also important to know that I am only one vote, and that it takes a majority of council to make a decision. It is important to have strong, experienced representation at the county, as forty percent of the county's levy comes from the city of Woodstock. Many decisions that affect the city are made at the county, such as water, wastewater, waste, county roads within the city, emergency services, and housing, to name a few. Are there things that we could do better? Most certainly, and we're working on it. I have always welcomed collaboration and appreciate fresh, fresh perspectives from passionate citizens. I believe actively listening and working to problem solve is a strength I possess. I make no false promises. There are complicated issues facing Woodstock, as there are in so many other communities. There is a serious need to bring all levels of government together to find a solution. This cannot be done without a joint commitment. We need a community that has something for everyone, and I want to be on the team as we focus on making Woodstock and Oxford County the very best place to live, work, learn, and raise our families. Again, I am respectfully asking for your support on October twenty-fourth. Vote for honesty, integrity, commitment, and experience on October twenty-fourth. Vote for Sandra J. Talbot.
Thank you very much. Just beat Sandy.
I want to first thank the moderator and organizer, Ann Rogers TV, putting this great event on for us all here. It has been a pleasure to provide insight into me, my story, and my campaign, and I thank you all for listening. I wanted to be, I want to be elected to city council as I have the experience and knowledge to create positive change in our city. I want to be the bridge builder in our community to help grow our city. My experience and knowledge obtained through my volunteer work in the community will help to address the issues that are important to you all. I believe that I have the understanding of local priorities to speak on these issues, but more importantly, act on these issues. I'm a proud member of the community here in Woodstock, and I want the best for the citizens of Woodstock. I have been calling Woodstock my home for many years now, and the, um, the chance to create positive change in our city would be an honor and privilege. I have been committed to public service well before running for political office, and will continue this work after the election. Make your vote count on October twenty-fourth, and please vote for Jaspeet Sandhu for city council. Thank you.
Jay Tepper.
Tonight, you've heard a lot of us give a lot of similar answers to some very tough questions. You have the hardest job of it all. You have to choose who you think are the most committed and dedicated people to serve you as a community. For thirty-three years, I have already been doing that, and I'm looking forward to the opportunity to continue to do that for you on that level of city council. All I want to say in conclusion is, please give me your vote, I'll be one hundred percent behind you in anything that you want to talk about. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jason Norris.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you all for coming out and being involved. That, that is key, that's huge. Uh, also, just get out and vote, 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 vote. Doesn't have to be for me, but vote. I want to thank Uni4 for, for, uh, hosting us, and I want to thank Rogers for being here as well. Um, I, I would like you to vote for me because I think I could be a huge asset on council. We had the question earlier about leadership, and, uh, you know, leadership is about having different gears running, uh, and, and council's the same. You, you know, electing the same person in council to do a job, you're not getting different outlooks, you're not getting different aspects. I think my background in events and tourism could really help, it could really be a good insight for, uh, for city council. Uh, I'd also like to talk to you about making sure you talk to your kids and see what they think, 'cause they're the ones that are gonna be coming up afterwards. I've talked to some teen youth, and they feel like they're not being heard, or they feel like their parents are hiding things from them that they see every day. And, uh, you know, I, I think they're, you know, I think they need to, or have open discussion. Uh, lastly, I'd like to say that, uh, if you'd like to know more about us council members, uh, Krabby Joe's will be on Tuesday at four-thirty, I believe?
Monday.
Oh, Monday, sorry, Monday at four-thirty, Krabby Joe's. Uh, a lot of us will be there, will be there, you can ask us your own questions. So please show up, and, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Wes Mazer.
So what qualities, skills, and experience will I, Wes Mazer, bring to Woodstock city council? Leadership, integrity, and tenacity, plus that award-winning business experience, thoughtful innovation, relationship building, financial literacy, community engagement, and teamwork. And that's combined with both the willingness and ability to listen and learn. I believe that I have the experience, passion, and commitment for our community to make a positive difference, to do the job well. And against the advice of my campaign advisor, I have made a promise. One of the first things that I posted on my website and on my Facebook campaign page was my promise, and this is my promise to you. I promise to serve on city council with diligence, authenticity, passion, and to be an advocate for every person that calls our city home. Please head to my website, learn more, uh, learn more about me at wesmazer.ca, uh, or check out my Facebook page, which is Vote Wes Mazer. I humbly ask you for your trust and your confidence in your vote on October twenty-fourth. Together, we can honor the past and agree to the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Wes Mazer.
All day today, I had a song stuck in my head, ABBA, Take a Chance on Me. Random song in my head all day. Felt very soothing, being here tonight. Like I said before, I am passionate about community, I'm passionate about community involvement. I've worked with an extensive list of boards, groups, organizations, committees. As I mentioned before, in twenty-nineteen, I received the Community Involvement Award, voted on by the peers of this community through the Woodstock Chamber of Commerce. The time I have spent working with local boards has allowed me to gain experience in governance, making difficult but critical decisions, implementing new policies and procedures, and working as a team for the betterment of that organization. My passion and involvement, both personally and professionally, have broadened my knowledge and understanding of our community and the folks who call Woodstock home. As a lifelong Woodstock resident, an active volunteer, promoter of nonprofit organizations, and a local radio personality, I've worked hard to earn the trust of the citizens of Woodstock. With joining the electoral race, I am looking for your vote. I am promising to continue to be that trusted voice for our community with clear communication and transparency between city council and you. If you would like to check out my website, lizwforcouncil.council.ca, you can also find me on social media. I'm happy to have any questions come my way, and I'd love to hear from people and hear from you one-to-one as well. I'm a voice you can trust, and I want to be a voice for you. Again, my name is Liz Wismer Van Meere, and I would be honored to receive your vote and re, and represent you on city council.
Well, first of all, thank you to, uh, Local Six Three Six and Rogers for having us here. Uh, just want to say, vote, get out there and vote. Thank you for coming out. Um, I'm ready to listen to you guys, ready to communicate, ready to work for you. franciscocornage.com, or for me.
Thank you very much. Mark.
One of the things we've, uh, talked about is the housing concerns, housing crisis, and the fact that it's at all levels. Want to know that there's certainly some plans already underway in the city of Woodstock. For example, the building at the corner of Oxford and Drew by Southside Group, uh, Parkinson Road, affordable housing with eight units built by the county, also even a small complex coming up at Park Row and Mill Street that they're digging a hole for right now. What I'm saying is there's certainly a lot of developers who are building, uh, in the city of Woodstock, we certainly are falling behind the race as far as, uh, the housing crisis, if you want to call it that. I'll be honest with you- I'll be honest with you, I'm actually quite disappointed in tonight's debate that we didn't really talk a lot about the issues in the campaign, and that would mostly be surrounding things like cultural facilities, like the library and the museum, parks and recreation, like the trails and the civic center arena, and also Lions Pool. The engineering department, economic development, the transit, and so many other items that really are the city of Woodstock and what the city of Woodstock does operate. Sometimes we do have our hands tied. We're the first ones to admit it because the city does have a lot of property to be sold by the Economic Development Office, but it's not right yet serviced, but there are other pieces of property out there right now that are being held on to by investors and landowners who seem to either want too much money for it or aren't willing to come to the table for reasonable projects with the city of Woodstock. Just want to let you know that on the election day, to be able to vote for Mark Schattenberg, and by all means, check out my website, And since Liz mentioned it twice, I'll mention it once I was inducted in the Woodstock Sports Wall of Fame for my long list of volunteer efforts. Thanks.
That sounded nice. Thank you. Integrity, empathy, vision, those are some of my best qualities. Those are some of the qualities that I teach to the youth and have been doing for the past 10 years. And now that I'm at a seat at this table and looking for a seat at a smaller one, I have to take my own advice. So at the beginning, I mentioned and harped on something which was diversity and the lack of attention towards it, and if you notice with the number of questions that we received today, none of them really touched on that. But however, as I said then, it is a reality with the growth of this city, so we do need to tend to it with that idea. Diversity, inclusion, preservation of our heritage as a city, progression towards the future. The most beautiful thing about that future is it's now. Now is our time. Thank you.
Thank you again. Oh, my goodness, this mic, let me tell you. Thank you again to everyone for attending this evening. Thank you. And to Unifor Local 636, I'm going to leave it with, I really hope I can count on your support on October 24th. My name is Kate Leatherbarrow, and I am running for Woodstock city council. And this quote I think of often, and it speaks to me, so I hope it speaks to you. It is by Brene Brown. "Daring leaders who live into their values are never silent about hard things." Thank you.
You could have left the Frederick out. Thank you very much. Doing nothing is not an option. Change is needed now from top to bottom. We must hold the line on taxes. We must start getting rid of these service charges, starting with them damnable garbage tags. Thank you. I am retired. I am knowledgeable, experienced, accessible, available, empathetic, and committed. I'd like anybody who's interested, I didn't get to meet all of you, if you want to stay around and ask me any questions, I'd love to hear from you. Thank you to Unifor for hosting this. Thank you to Rogers for videotaping it, and to the Rogers man, if you got my good side, let me know. I've been looking for it for 30 years. Folks, you are the reasons we are running. We are here for you. Me, I've never sought leadership. Leadership seeks me out. Why? I don't know. But you folks are the cornerstone of democracy. I would ask you on October 24th to please exercise your franchise and to vote for Allison Gouling. You will get hard work and dedication from me. And finally, to paraphrase William Jennings Bryan, "Vote early and vote often." Thank you.
Connie Lauder?
Thank you. Serving as your mayor for the past eight months, you saw me in action and could witness my credibility, my professionalism, my warmth, and my genuine pride in this city. I look forward to working with new members on council, offering my knowledge as mentorship as we move forward in the next term of council. I am a team player, working for the betterment of our city. My commitment is strong. My track record speaks for itself. I want to continue to serve you, the citizens of Woodstock. Your vote for Connie Lauder on October 24th gives you strong voice, a dedicated person, and a dedicated leadership skills. Thank you, Rogers and Unifor, for hosting this evening. Thanks for everyone who's attending. I ask for your vote October 24th. The city means everything to me. I will listen to you. Thank you.
Leah Santos?
Thank you all for attending and watching at home, and thank you to Unifor for hosting us tonight. I'm Leah Santos, and I'm running for city council. I have knocked on a lot of doors and heard often that we need change. This shows me that people love this city. People are invested in the improvement of this city and wish to see better outcomes for us all. Woodstock is not a lost cause. We care. I'm an empath at heart and want to provide care for the city. I expect this position to come with difficult decisions to make, and I anticipate hard work to come. I'm not dissuaded by this challenge. I've been encouraged to take on this work by my family, friends, and neighbors. Again, my name is Leah Santos. I'm running for city council. On October 24th, go vote for a new direction in Woodstock.
Big Beckham?
Yeah, and I just want to thank Unifor and Rogers for hosting this and everything. And I'm here to work for the citizens of Woodstock. My door will be open 24/7. This is definitely a job of its own. It has to be looked after. I'm retired, I'm semi-retired. I have the time to put into it. I will get you answers. I have an open door policy with every one of our services here. I've talked to them all. Boss, fire, engineering, CEO, the land development guy, I've talked to everybody. Their door is open to me. I will get you answers. You want answers, and like I said, I don't care if you call me at 3:00 in the morning. I will end up and be there to work for the people of Woodstock and the citizens of Woodstock. We have 21,000 people that are eligible to vote approximately, give or take, and we need to get a better turnout than what we've had. But I just hope you'll vote for me because I've got the time, I've got the effort, and I've already done the backbone and the, and the legwork of seeing all these people, getting an open door policy. And I've got an open, I, I will have an open door policy with all the folks here, the citizens of Woodstock, and that. And I don't mind meeting with groups. I don't have a problem meeting with groups. You want to call me, you want to discuss with me, you want to go to Tim Hortons, you want to go someplace, I will find the time to do that. I don't have a problem with that. I thank you very much for your time, and I greatly appreciate everybody coming out, and I hope I can count on your vote. And like I said, don't hesitate to call me or do anything like that because I will end up and look after things. Thank you.
Well, that concludes tonight's meeting. I want to thank the audience for the respectful cooperation. The candidates, I also, I want to thank you for your attendance and your respectful cooperation as well for the meeting. Your dedication, your passion for our wonderful city is memorable and greatly appreciated. Much luck to all of you. Thank you very much.